Good morning. It's 9:00 AM, August 27th. I would now call to order the meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. Please, if you're able to stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is apprised of approval of the tax roll adjustments, approval of the council payable, approval of payroll, approval of the July 31st disaster declaration extension 24-123, approval of the county commission meeting minutes for August 19th and 20th, approval of the study session minutes for August 20th, and approval of the public forum. Are there any items any commissioner wishes to remove?
Move approval?
Second.
We've got an approval and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Okay.
Simpson Road right-of-way acquisition with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning, Justin.
So my office has been working on plans to replace a bridge at the intersection of Shipple and Simpson Road. This project also includes some channel and roadway improvements from Shipple Road up to Campbell. And if you look on the map here, so that's the area in the blue rectangle, so the bridge is down here, and there's the channel and roadway improvement continues north all the way up to Campbell Road. So we're kind of at that part of the project where we're trying to acquire the right-of-way to complete this project. So right-of-way letters were sent out to the landowners at the end of June. And we heard back from a brother and sister who owned two different parcels along this road, and they've expressed that before agreeing to sell any right-of-way for this project here, that they would, they really want Celine County to take ownership of the ditch and dike system south of Shipple. And so what they're referring to here is, it's kind of hard to see here, but there's an orange rectangle from Shipple, and there's a ditch that starts here at Shipple and continues south all the way to the Celine River. I'll make sure I got my rivers right. So our research, and we've done extensive research on this, trying to figure out when this ditch was built, who built it, you know, trying to figure out really who's responsible really for this ditch. And we finally found a plan of profile, actually I think it was just a profile, but it was dated in 1913 for this project here. So this infrastructure has some age to it. We didn't find any right-of-way documents, you know, attached to this since it was just a profile, you know. So from what we've determined is this ditch and dike system is outside of the county right-of-way. And really, the main reason why the two landowners want this ditch maintained is right here. So here's Shipple. So just south of Shipple, there is a piece of cultivated ground here that doesn't drain very well. There's quite a bit of water that comes down to this field, and there is a, I believe it's a 24-inch pipe that goes through the dike, drains into the ditch, and that's what drains this whole area. Let me bump one more. So you can kind of see here, this is a Google Earth aerial where this whole area here, it doesn't drain very well, especially if the ditch along Simpson is either, you know, full of water, you know, or silted in and it doesn't allow, doesn't allow the field to drain. So that's really the reason why they want Celine County to take maintenance of this. And really, the perception has been that this is a Celine County asset for a long time. And we've actually, our maintenance operations have actually cleaned this ditch out several times. But our records don't indicate that we have any right-of-way through there. And so, and we've done extensive research on this. We've been through about every single set of plans, all the archives, we've had to try to figure out what's going on. And we've determined that there's really never been right-of-way that's been acquired through there. At least right-of-way that's been acquired and either registered, or we have any kind of documentation for that. So that's really the reason why I'm here, you know. So I have talked with the maintenance, and Darren Fishel is here, you know, asking him if, you know, what his opinion is as far as taking over ownership of this drainage system. And he says, well, they've been doing it for a while anyway, and so he doesn't have any problem continuing to do that. So where we're at is if it is the desire of the commission, you know, to take over maintenance responsibilities of this ditch and dike system, I would like to have that in county right-of-way, road right-of-way. And so really, that's the reason why I'm here, is to see if the, you know, commission would like to, number one, you know, take over the maintenance responsibilities of this ditch and dike. I think, did I get another picture? So here's a picture on, at Shipple Road, looking south, and there's kind of a blue line here again, it's kind of hard to see here. Here's the ditch and the dike or berm just on the west side of the ditch. So the ditch parallels Simpson Road, you know, so it looks like a road ditch. And this, and the berm here does get pretty significant. Right here, it's, you know, it's kind of right at the beginning, but it does get fairly taller further south, south you go.
Your picture there, is that the bridge that's going to be replaced?
Yes, yes.
And that is a concrete, like prefab cast stuff? Is that what that is now?
The existing structure, it's got timber pile, and that's the big issue, is a timber pile and timber back wall, and then it's steel beams underneath that, and then there is the metal, it's metal decking with, I believe it's asphalt wearing surface on top of that. So that's what's going to be replaced.
Justin, are we putting the cart before the horse if we start asking questions now?
No, no, go ahead.
Well, what makes this ditch unique to any other ditch in Celine County? We have the right-of-way, I mean, the ditch goes right up next to the road, why is there not?
We do not have the right-of-way. And this whole-
But we do just about everywhere else, don't we?
Yes, yes. What's-
Well, okay, let's back, let me finish that up, but then, if, let's assume that the, we're playing the devil's advocate, and the landowners don't want to sell back up the road if we don't take this road in, what happens then?
It's a good question. That's the next step. So yeah, it's there, it's acquiring the right-of-way for the bridge project is kind of dependent on taking ownership and maintenance responsibilities of this.
Okay, if we take on that ownership responsibility, do we have to buy that ditch now?
So yeah, that's what I was getting to. So there's three landowners here that we're dealing with. So we've got a parcel here, that's one of the landowners that is requiring that we take ownership. We've got another sister of the family that owns this parcel right here, and then we have a third right down here just north of the river. So there's three parcels. The two landowners to the north, there's two sisters here, they're willing to donate the right-of-way, you know, for Celine County to maintain this. And so it would be really a pretty simple transaction for that. However, the parcel down at the south, what they are asking is they, they're getting an attorney involved for this, and so they want their attorney fees paid for to acquire the ditch so that we can maintain it. And they're saying it's going to be no more than $1,400.
How many acres are involved in that third parcel?
Wayne, do you remember? It's going to be, it's about, we would have-
13.53.
Come on, people.
Yeah, that's the whole one. It would be significantly less what we're trying to acquire.
Well, I understand that, but that's what I'm saying. I'm looking at it from their perspective. They're trying to protect their rights to 13.8 acres, and they're getting an attorney to go through that over what we're going to buy as a few hundred feet or whatever.
Well, it's really, yeah, 20-foot wide is kind of what we're looking at through the length of the parcel. You know, and it's, the further south you go, the ditch actually gets pretty deep. I mean, almost too deep to get equipment down in the ditch, so we'd have to kind of work. So, what I'm trying to say is it's not an area that they can mow, they can maintain, that's, you know, it's full of brush and volunteer trees, you know. So, but that's what they want. I mean, they're really concerned about losing trees on the top of their berm because it kind of hides their property back there. And we met with them, and we're like, you know, hey, we'll work out a deal. What we're trying to do is to keep good positive flow through that ditch, you know. So really, we need access to the bottom of that ditch and up the back slope a little bit, so we can at least keep that cleaned out of, you know, brush and, you know, and little saplings that's trying to grow through there. He didn't want to give any more than to the center line of the ditch, which it gets to be kind of a V-ditch down through there. And it's, and we really need to be able to clean up that back slope a little bit. You know, so that's kind of where we're at. Moving forward, which is alternatives for action, you know, would be, one would be to accept the right-of-way and maintenance responsibilities through all properties, you know, between the Celine River and Shipple Road. And this would require payment not to exceed $1,400 for that south property. Alternative two would be to accept the right-of-way and maintenance responsibilities through the northern two properties. This excludes the southernmost property, even though maintenance responsibilities do not connect to the Celine River. It would improve their drainage area that the landowners, so the drainage problem issue is right up here, just south of Shipple. We could clean that ditch out to where that field could at least drain out as best as it can. Or three, do not accept any right-of-way and maintenance responsibilities of the earth berm and drainage ditch. However, this may affect a right-of-way acquisition for the bridge project. Staff recommendation would be to accept right-of-way and maintenance responsibilities through the northern two properties, only accept the maintenance responsibilities through this area as the right-of-way would be donated for that. Budget impacts, annual maintenance cost is estimated to be $3,000 to $5,000 per year, depending on the weather, of course, which would be covered by our annual maintenance budget and the road and bridge fund. And this would be mainly equipment time and labor time. So, and some fuel. So, right-of-way costs not to exceed $1,400 for the southernmost property if we decided to try to acquire that right-of-way. Since this parcel is not located, it's not part of the project that is receiving the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, this cost would need to be covered by either the Special Road Construction Fund or the Special Highway Fund.
You're using a couple terms here that I want to clear up and help me out. You've used the term ownership, taking ownership. You said that, and then you said right-of-way, and those are two different things.
Correct.
So-
This would be an easement, just like the rest of our road right-of-way. It's not really ownership, it would be-
Responsibility is a better-
Maintenance ownership, I guess, is really what I was referring to.
I just didn't want people to think that they were giving up their land. I mean, they're just giving it up, just like all of us, an easement on everybody's street for people. So they're gotcha.
Right, just a roadway easement, sorry for that.
So we're not, we're not, okay, that's all.
Justin, what is the purpose of the berm? They want water to drain out of that field, but yet they've built a berm.
Honestly, I think it was an area to waste the dirt. Where they were, you know, back in 1913 when they were, you know, digging this ditch, whoever did that, I'm not sure, I'm not even sure who was responsible. The profile was in our vault, and so you could assume that maybe the county did it, but we don't know. So, you know, as they're digging this, the dirt out in order to get, you know, positive drainage, they just piled it over there, you know, and made a berm out of it, just so they don't have to haul it off.
Doesn't that hold water in that field?
Yes. So there's, let me get to a-
I think, Jim, a little bit to answer your question, as I recall from years ago, it was the matter, the amount of water that was coming from the north of that area, it was to keep the water that was coming from the north into the fields. There's less water coming out of the field in that area than there was coming down from the north off that hill and everything. That's the reason that the berm was constructed.
Right, just, yeah, just south of Shipple, I mean, the berm does, there is a purpose for that there, because, yeah, there is a lot of drainage that comes up from the northwest, as well as straight north, which hopefully, the new ditch that we're going to build north of Shipple will contain more, will be able to hold more of the stormwater. And so it's less will come out of through this field here, but there's still a lot of water that comes down to this one here. And so, holding that back and not letting all of that water just flow straight through on, you know, across Simpson. So there is a purpose right in through here. South of there, there's not much. I think it was just an area where it's just, they had, they didn't want to haul off all of that dirt, so they just piled it there.
Justin, I've got two questions. Number one, if, you said we've been maintaining that ditch now for a while, and said it wouldn't be any problem to take it over. Whose responsibility was that before we started maintaining that ditch?
That's a great question.
Celine County's been maintaining that ditch forever. I think Darren would agree with that. I mean, we spent, what, a month out there, a year ago or so, reconstructing that ditch and making the water flow.
Right.
I mean, it's no different than any other ditch in Celine County. We do maintain it. It's not like we haven't been maintaining it in the first place.
Well, what we're really doing is cleaning up the language, the legal language.
I guess, that's the way I'd see it.
Yeah, because, you know, and going back to a question you had earlier, so typically, when you're going down a county road, the section line, which is based, which is what the right-of-way is based off of, is pretty close to the center of the county road, not here. The road's all over the place, which means that the ditch is all over the place. It's, so for instance, at Shipple, the section corner, okay, is all the way against the bridge, so it's all the way towards the west side of the road. And so therefore, the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way, is right up next to the edge of the gravel road on the east side. But then you go further south, it jumps to the other side of the road. The section corner is all the way on the east side of the road, and the, so therefore the right-of-way is along the west side of the edge of the gravel road, which does not include any, you know, four-slope ditch, anything along through there. And so it just, it just meanders all the way through there. So that's where it gets kind of, we'll just call it interesting.
So impact, if we decide just to go ahead and accept the right-of-way from the sisters, and do not accept the right-of-way, or do not accept the other that they're, what kind of an impact is that going to have on completing the project that we're looking at?
It would, it would allow us to move forward, you know, because, and we actually surveyed the berm and the ditch. And so we can kind of show if we can maintain, you know, down to that southernmost property, we can get positive drainage. Now, keep in mind that the slope of that ditch is flat. It's a tenth of a percent grade. That's very, very flat. And we're also dealing with very erodible soils. I mean, you go up there and it's just, it's a fine sugar sand. You know, it doesn't take much for all of that sediment to, you know, float downstream in the deposit. And so it's going to be an issue, you know, forever, just because of the type of soils we're dealing with. But I was, I was told by the landowners that are pushing for this, that, you know, if they have some kind of assurance that we're going to maintain that ditch so that their field will drain, they would sell the right-of-way for our other project.
That gets, that's another term. They're not selling a right-of-way. So, a right-of-way, they don't even-
They're selling easement. Well, I don't know if that's a proper term. I mean, we purchased that easement.
I don't know. I mean, county councillor's not here, but my understanding is they're going to keep the property. They're not giving anything to us.
Correct.
We're giving something to them. So we're giving them assurances that it's now a right-of-way. I mean, it's a win-win situation.
Right.
On these first two north, on the two north properties, it's a no-brainer. It's just cleaning up language. I just want everybody to understand, we're not buying anything. Nobody's giving us anything. They're keeping the land.
Correct. We're acquiring the right-of-way easement, the road right-of-way easement.
And that brings me to why we want to pay $1,400 for, I don't even know why they would need an attorney. We're already maintaining the ditches. We have been for years and years and years.
Right.
It's cleaning up language, as you'd stated. I'm certainly against number one, paying for, I don't know what the need for the attorney in there is.
Right.
I assume the landowner's not here to-
The first, don't you agree that the two north properties, that's a no-brainer? And let's just-
They look at it that way by not saying, hey, just do it. Yeah, we want this cleaned up, or better.
Right. And about the only impact I can see is if we do not obtain the right-of-way easement on that south property and maintain that ditch, is really during larger flows?
Justin, wait, just a second. You're advocating or saying that we, if we don't get this, we're not going to maintain that part of the ditch. We're going to do that. There's no ditch that we don't stop and not clean up. That's, we're still going to maintain that. I think Darren would back that up. So I mean, that's what I'm saying. And Commissioner Shadwick's absolutely correct. It's to the advantage of the two north, that's almost a mile clear down to that other last section, it's just a few hundred feet thin. So I don't, I don't, that ditch is deep all the way down there.
Yes.
Justin, do we have to put any drainage structure through that berm anywhere?
No. And the field that doesn't drain very well, the last time we cleaned out that ditch, we replaced that pipe. And so it's a, is that correct, Aaron? Yeah.
And what size pipe is that?
I think it's a 24-inch. It's not real big.
Okay. Just as a quick question here, is the main thing about this whole situation here is to put in a new bridge, or is it to get the water to flow out of that field better? I mean, what's, what is the main?
So the main purpose of the original project from, you know, the bridges Shipple going north is to replace a bridge and provide better drainage coming down to that bridge. Because right now, you know, during big flood events, Simpson Road gets completely washed out. And so we're trying to provide a higher level of service on Simpson Road, you know, to where it doesn't overtop nearly as much. And then the bridge just needs to be replaced. The pile on the bridge is the real critical element in there, so it's timber pile. And once you start digging below the ground line, there's a lot of rot.
And this is going to be a new bridge, not a box culvert-type thing?
No, it's going to be a reinforced concrete box, a large one, but it's going to be a reinforced concrete. It's going to be as big as what's there.
Well, and you just said that it's like what's there really now, and you didn't say that. But if our issue is, is the water flow coming from the north to the south, is if we put in the same size, is that going to be big enough to get the water down through there?
So the structure matches the ditch south, okay? So, you know, if you put in a really large bridge, but the ditch leading away from the structure can't handle the water, then it's still, the larger bridge doesn't do any good, you know. So you kind of, your whole system has to kind of match each other. And so the new reinforced concrete box matches the downstream structure. We're trying to match that same capacity on the upstream channel.
The width of that bridge is no more than, what, 15 feet?
It's pretty narrow, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's, you know, from me to you. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's, you know, from me to you, Roger, that's all the further that thing is.
And we're going with quite a bit larger.
But it's, yeah, it's wider than the ditch itself.
Yes, yes.
And the, actually, if you look on the map, I'm pretty familiar with the area, north of the purple lines, that's where the water really starts roaring. Then it flattens out where the purple starts and then just flows at a, at a grade clear back down to the river.
Correct.
And...
Yeah. So, yeah, because there's a lot of water that's coming across interstate or through interstate and it's collected, there's a ditch right in through here where these trees are at.
Right.
And it tries to get over to Simpson Road and go south, but there's, this ditch here on Simpson Road can't handle the water and so it backs up and it flows through this property straight south, jumps Shippele Road and adds to the problem down over through here. And so this, this project will definitely help with that as well.
If you came to us without even the bridge project, the right of way thing still makes sense, you know, just cleaning up language, you know. And Commissioner Spark brought up a good point is, you know, which is it? Even, even if the bridge wouldn't be done, I think the property owners need some assurances that, you know, just, just like every other road in the county is. So I'm supportive of the bridge project, I'm supportive of the right of way acquisition, language, whatever you want. I'm just not supportive of $1,400, so.
Whichever one that, whichever one of those...
That is number two, and I echo the same sentiments.
And that's my recommendation.
Yeah. Any other questions? Any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 2024-122, alternative number two.
Second.
Which is the accept the right of way and maintenance responsibilities through the northern two properties. That excludes the southernmost property, even though maintenance responsibilities do not connect to the Seline River, it would improve field drainage. There's one part of that that I am a little bit uncomfortable with, and that is that we still want to maintain going on south.
There's some statutes that I think would allow us to...
And I know the road and bridge department's not going to go down there and just stop maintaining a portion because, so, that, and I did hear a second.
My second, yeah.
Okay, I got a motion in a second to approve alternative number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Home Health Nursing Recruiting Bonus with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Jason.
After that lively conversation. So I'm here this morning with actually two RFAs, but the first one is regarding recruiting. So over the last year, we have had four new nurses that were new hires that have left for a variety of reasons, whether it was job fit, transfer, or to seek more money elsewhere. And that, you know, coupled with a challenge of quality candidates, and even though the pay scale has much improved, we still find many of them that are, you know, able to go and make more elsewhere. We have offered a $1,500 recruiting bonus that was paid at successful completion of two months. This has been going on for the last 18 months and has not really succeeded in recruiting candidates. So I'm asking the commission today to authorize an increase of our recruiting incentive under the following parameters. And this would come from unused salary, which I'll talk more about in a minute. So we are proposing a $10,000 recruiting bonus for RNs and an $8,000 for LPNs. And with using unused salary, given the quickness with which the end of the year is approaching, I'm also proposing that this would be paid out in full if a nurse is hired by December 31st of 2024. Now, that new hire would sign a form that states if they leave before a year is up, they would have to repay a prorated amount of that recruitment bonus. Additionally, I'm also, you know, being realistic that there's a high probability that we still probably, even with that, may not fill all three of the vacant positions before the 31st and so after January 20th, or January 1st of 2025, I would like the option to continue this incentive program until we are fully staffed. Again, new hires will be required to sign a form that says they would have to repay a prorated amount if they leave service before a year, and it would also come from the unused salary if we don't have hires. So alternatives for action are to approve the action, of course, either deny the action, counter with a different amount, or send myself back for more information. I would recommend that we increase the recruiting incentive along with our other efforts for recruiting in order to attract quality candidates. And then as far as budget impact, given this would come out of the salary line for non-exempt personnel, we would end up still with these bonuses having quite a bit left in that salary line. Right now, we've spent about $450,000 or so, and I know it says here about two retention bonuses, but that's on the next RFA if they had been the other way. Bottom line though is that with, even on the high end of an estimate with salary for current staff that's paid out of that line, salary for staff, if we were to hire people today, the bonuses, and then if later on the retention bonuses I talked about are approved, we would still end up with about $19,000 still left sitting in that budget line that is unexpended as far as salary is concerned. Questions?
So these bonuses would continue to next year also?
Yes, sir.
So we would only use the funds for this year? Next year it could go up then?
Well, next year we would, the same amounts.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I get what you're saying. You're using unused funds for this year, but you don't have any unused funds for next year already, so.
No, I'm just projecting on if we have not hired anybody and then as that time goes.
You know, hiring bonuses are one thing. To me, the issue is why are they leaving? And they're probably leaving because the salary's not high enough. And to me, that's the area that we need to attack, is the salary not a recruiting bonus. I mean, recruiting bonus is fine, and then after a year, the salary's not good enough, they're gone. I mean, that's, maybe that's not what's happening, but that seems to be the realistic part of it to me. I would rather that we attack it from a salary standpoint rather than a recruitment bonus, which is pretty...
And most of, and I think Marilyn could help me out on this, a lot of what we hear or what we have had from quality candidates when they are talking about their, even when we get into the conversations about, you know, starting pay, is already hitting step six, step seven, you know, on the pay scale. And, you know, if they come in at step seven, then by county policy, they're already maxed out, you know, other than cost of living for 10 years. And there's nothing really, and can't really, you know, have any more room to go beyond that, so.
I've been dwelling on that for eight years now. That's, that's the problem with our, our system. But the, why are they leaving instead of staying? It's because of salary, not because they didn't get a bonus to start.
I might be wrong and maybe you can help me there, but it seems like that occupation is very competitive and there's bonuses being offered by numerous entities.
Correct.
And do we have people that are just bonus shopping? Sign up for a year, take that bonus, jump over there and grab that bonus? I mean, I, I look at what Commissioner Vidrickson's saying and maybe we need to be more forthright and say, here's what that job's worth and here's what you need to be making.
And that would be, you know, looking more at the pay structure is a good long-term solution to fix the long-term problem. In the short term, when I've got two nurses carrying the weight, we need people, they need help and...
That's probably the best response I've heard there.
We, we have, you know, we have tried everything. Like I said, we've done that bonus, we have done social media posts, you know, we've done radio ads, we are, you know, making sure that candidates know that the, the hours are guaranteed. We have it where, you know, even if you want to do part-time, we'll hire it part-time just so that we can get, and a part-time too, as far as these recruitment bonuses are concerned. If they hired on part-time, it'd be prorated as part-time. But we pretty much have tried everything that we can try and this is...
Jason, I have another question about your bonus, and you're, you're talking about paying it out in, in 60 days after they've been there and they still have to stay a year. Okay, let's say they don't stay a year and they don't give you the bonus back. Now we're in a court proceeding. You know, I would, I'm not necessarily fighting against this just yet because, but I don't like to pay it out right away. I think it should be paid out incrementally throughout the year, if, if we go that way. And then somewhere next time around, we've got to address the salaries part of it.
So originally, when, when Christie Ponton and I were discussing this, we were looking at like a two-month, six-month dispersment. The only problem with that is right now is that if we're using the unused salary dollars, we can't bank on a two and a six-month dispersment because now we're already in February of 2025 and those unused dollars from this year are already gone. So that was our, kind of our discussion to ensuring that we're trying to use at least for, you know, those unused dollars that are in the budget this year.
I will ask that of our administrator then, from the, from a budgetary standpoint, those dollars cannot be carried over for that purpose? I mean, hold over, you know, as, as he's saying, and do it quarterly as an example or something like that?
If the funds are considered obligated, which would be an auditor question, you might be able to consider that an encumbrance and roll them over into the succeeding fiscal year.
Jason, another question then. Have we, I mean, I'm sure you have looked, I know that Salina Regional offers a sign-on bonus for, through our nurses. And have you, I mean, what is the, I mean, the difference in pay that we're paying and the difference in pay that Salina Regional's paying and the difference in bonuses? I mean, are we competitive in between there two with their pay and with their bonuses that they're offering?
Well, when I looked at what they're offering for bonuses, they're offering $10,000 and they've, I think theirs was not for nurses across the board anymore, it's more into some of their specialty nurses of where they're, they're struggling. As far as pay comparison between us and Salina Regional, that I don't know 100% because I haven't really been able to get that information from them for that pay comparison.
I feel, I feel your pain and your other nurses, I mean, they need help. So I, I get it and you've been working hard and HR's been working hard. And what conversations have you had with the four that have left? I mean, maybe that, this is an HR question. I mean, do we ever do exit interviews? I mean, did they leave town? Did they, you know, whatever? Does that make sense that, is everybody leaving because of money?
Well, one transferred and became the health educator.
Okay, all right, so that's one.
So one stayed with the county but moved over to a different position.
Okay.
I don't know what I can really say about the other three.
And maybe you don't know, maybe I'm asking a question you don't know, but I just...
One was not a good fit, one did move on for more pay, so it's a variety of reasons.
Yeah.
And I think Jason and Christie have been great. They've considered LPNs for the position. It used to be all RNs, so LPNs. And I think where this might, like, get some interest at LPNs to put that towards bridging to an RN position, so if we can kind of give them that incentive for maybe some tuition as well.
Right.
I have another question. I mean, we're currently at $1,500 for a recruiting bonus and your suggestion is that we move to $10,000. I mean, that's a pretty healthy increase. How did you come up with that number? I mean, is that what other people are offering or why, how do we come up with $10,000?
A couple things. So $10,000 is what Salina Regional has been offering and is still offering. $10,000, I believe, is what was proposed for lawyers as far as recruiting bonus. And so that was where we, we felt it was a round number to, to land since it's kind of what is out there.
Well, I'm, I'm like Mr. Shadwick said, I'm feeling your pain too. But, you know, we just heard last week from, I don't know how many homeowners and property owners about the taxes and this money just keeps coming and coming and $10,000, it doesn't seem right that we are in competition or with the, with the Salina Regional, but maybe we are. Maybe that job is...
Well, it's the whole field, quite honestly, of nursing. It's, it's everywhere. It's not just here. It's every healthcare provider that has nurses and there's been an ongoing nursing shortage and there's still a nursing shortage.
I, I have, I have a, the nurses that you're trying to, to hire are not the same type of floor nurses that are at Salina Regional. That's, that's totally a different job. That's why I'm trying to differentiate between the bonuses that they're offering and what we're offering, because there aren't the same job.
No, they're not.
That's, that's where I'm just having, wrestling with that a little bit.
But the nurses that we have, unlike Salina Regional, working on a floor, are always in a clean environment. They're not having to go into homes that, you know, may have bedbugs or smokers or, you know, many of those other, what we would consider workplace hazards that, you know, you don't necessarily have to deal with in a clean, fairly sterile or environment at a hospital.
It's a tough job. There's no, I mean, nobody's, nobody's arguing that. I mean, that...
Jason, you see any throwback or anything against the nurses we got now on, you know, if we're offering a $10,000 hiring bonus, that they're not getting some type of a retention bonus for staying with the county?
For the, the two home health nurses or overall?
Overall.
So, I mean, that's always a possibility. I think though internally, they all recognize the struggle that particularly home health has gone through. And we'll talk retention for the, the two home health nurses that have stuck it out and carried everything after this one. But, but the rest of the areas, when you're talking about like, you know, dealing with mothers and infants or, you know, the clinical stuff, that has actually been a wider pool of nurse applicants. And so they have had, in some ways, an easier time filling those than you do for home health nursing.
And we've kind of set a precedent in the past.
Well, they still, yeah.
Yeah, we've set a precedent in the past because we've given this bonus to correctional officers, to the lawyers. And this makes sense to me, instead of raising the pay for every single person in the county is just, you know, start figuring out where we're struggling and do this. So I get it, whether $10,000 is right, like Commissioner Vidrickson said, I'm, I'm probably not the right person. I mean, I am the right person to ask because I'm one of the five up here, but I'm just saying, that's a hard one to say.
Yeah.
You know, do you go in the middle? And so, so $10,000 is fine for me. I think this is maybe a short-term fix though and, but if, but if this is what, what is needed, I'm supportive of it, so.
And, and I'm not going to fight that either, but I do wish we could do something about incrementally how we, how we hand this out, rather than do it 60 days later and hand them $10,000.
Yeah, that seems to me to be a budget thing that could be worked on.
And then have to fight it out at the end of the six months when they decide they want to leave or if they decide to leave and how do we get our $10,000 back? It's already been paid in taxes and everything else. That's, that's, we're throwing money at something, we're just trying to find, figure out where it's going to stick.
Right.
I get that.
Okay, any other questions?
It'd be nice to know, I think the administrator brought up maybe an avenue to do that as encumbered funds. Could, could we check on that and could we make that, tie that into incentive, a monthly incentive running a year, which would solve that? Is that enough of a carrot?
Oh, that's a good point.
I don't know if a...
Well, when you say carrot, that, that's what we're trying to do is, is hook them. I, it would, I think if we could do maybe 50% early on and then increment the rest of it, that would be a, you know, a little easier to swallow.
Well, could we, is, does it make sense, and I'll ask the administrator this, to, to hold off one week on this to see what we can do, what our, what our avenues are for carryover bonus throughout 2025? for carryover bonus throughout 2025? If we can ask the auditor that, what we can do, and that might help us make a better decision.
Sure, I'd be happy to call the auditor later today, and I don't think Jason's going to hire anybody in the next seven days anyway, so kicking this a week probably.
And that makes sense to me. I'm supportive of the $10,000. I understand what you're going through, and we do have a precedent in doing this, so I'm okay with the whole concept. I, I think waiting off a week's not going to hurt anything, and more information we can get for, like Commissioner Wee said, that'd be great. That's my view at least, I don't know about everybody.
So this would be a table for a week?
Yeah.
You need a motion to do that?
Do you want to take any public comment before you do a motion?
Yes, is there any public comment?
Norman Mantle, Salina, we're a mobile society. We don't want to stay anywhere for more than six months. People can go here and get a job, I'll work for six months, I'll go on down the road. That's what your problem is, is we're a mobile society. I can go here and get a job, I'll work there for six months, go another place, work there for six months.
Thank you, Norm. Anybody else from the public? Okay, now I'll bring it back for that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table RFA 2024-127 as presented.
Second motion.
I got a motion and a second to table RFA 2024-127. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 5-0. Okay.
I'm assuming we're heading down the same path on this one?
This one's retention, but yeah.
I mean, no on table, I mean.
Home Health RN Retention Bonus with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
All right, so with all the previous discussion on the background part of it, this part of it is to recognize and support the, the two nurses that have been holding down and have stuck with it for the last, you know, year or two, seeing all the patients, overseeing the, you know, being the, basically the, the charge nurse for the aides and everything else, taking on the patients when somebody has left, and just keeping everything functioning while they've still been able to maintain an 80-patient census, provide oversight for the aides, documentation timeliness and accuracy for billing. So I'm asking today, basically, for a retention bonus of $7,500 pre-tax for both, for each, for Mandy Kramer and Christie Ponton. Again, that would come out of the salary line for unused salary. So alternatives, approve the action, refuse the action, counter, or send me back for more information. In this age where getting people and keeping people is extremely difficult, and for as much as they do and take on to not only see their patients, but case manage everything with doctors, physical therapists, speech therapists, you know, coordinating aid visits, and high rate of accuracy in care, I recommend that this be approved. Of course, it will come out of that same salary line that would leave, in this case, not counting any recruiting bonuses, but well over, around $49,000 in that budget line.
Jason, does this, I guess this brings back what I mentioned earlier. You've got two nurses that you want to give this retention bonus to. Is there going to be any drawback from the rest of the employees there? They come to work every single day, do their job and everything?
They're very well-made, but this is a special circumstance for everything that has, that they've had to endure in order to continue to do the job and to keep them doing the job.
Yeah, I have no problem with, you know, with that part. I've just, you know, just didn't know if we were going to set something that's going to say, you know, I've been here for 10 years, and, you know, I come to work every day, don't I deserve a retention bonus too?
Jason, are these two employees, are they, were either of them hired under the $1,500 incentive?
No.
They were both on board prior to that?
Christie, definitely, Mandy, I think Mandy was, because Mandy was pre-COVID, and I don't think we started doing those until COVID, or somewhere within that timeframe.
Well, I look at this a little different than the, the first RFA you brought. These two employees are there, they've shown some longevity, they're seeing what, what it's taken to get their peers to come in, and I think it's appreciative to, to do this. But I'd like to see the, the $7,500 done over a three-month period, just for a small bit of protection for the county to know they'll have those employees there, where you pay it in October, November, December, instead of one lump check in September, October.
I think for as long as they've been here, and as much as they've stuck it out, I don't think that them getting it all in one lump sum is going to, that we have to worry about paying out a retention bonus and then either one of them going somewhere else. Because quite honestly, if they were going to go somewhere else, they would have already left.
Jason, I commend you for, for coming forward and, and sticking up for your employees. I'll, I'll go back to my comment that I've been making for six or seven years now, that the, the pay schedules for the way that the government works versus the way the private enterprises works, and you've got an employee who has been doing an outstanding job above and beyond, and you're the business owner, probably don't have any problem giving them with that money. We're dealing with taxpayers' money. I, I think these two people, and I've seen them before, I know they're, they're worth it, but with our, the way our schedule is set up, I, I just don't know how we can do it. But I, I'm in favor of, I mean, I'm not going to vote against giving them a bonus, but there's going to be 348 other people knocking on our door, I have a feeling, that work in the county, but.
And that's what makes this one different than the previous.
Agreed.
RFA, is, the previous RFA, we've set a precedent with the correction officers and the, and the attorneys, and that, again, I'm okay with this. I just want this commission to understand, there's some ramifications of this for future commissions. I mean, we are setting a, we are setting a precedent for a long time.
Well, I, I think.
If we're comfortable with that, that's fine, just, just be aware that this might not be a one-and-done.
It, the whole pay schedule thing is going to need revamping based on the way that we're doing it. I mean, I don't know how many times this is, now that we've heard this same request come from different departments for different positions, for different reasons, but pay schedule is, is the issue.
Maybe HR can help me here, but did we not do a, a retention bonus for our COs?
Yes, there was, there was a $5,000 corrections retention that was provided to corrections officers.
And there was a little bit of squeaking and squealing from Esso and, and others, but we weathered the storm, we got it done. It seems like the corrections officers has leveled out, and, and it's steady, and we've, we solved the situation there.
Thank you for bringing that up.
It worked.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I meant what I've said, we, we have done that before, so I had forgotten that, so thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Any public comment? Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-124 as presented.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-124. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so passes 5-0. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, gentlemen, and my staff, thank you.
Okay.
Appointment of viewers and selection of date for road viewing with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So this is a part of a continuing series of items regarding the potential for opening a public road to a landlocked parcel located north of Salina along the Slem River. The commission has considered this a couple of times. On August 13th, you heard the matter and voted to proceed through the steps as outlined in the state statute. The next stage of that is to appoint three persons to view the proposed road and select a date for the viewing. Commissioners Hayes, Sparks, and Vidrickson have volunteered to serve as the viewers. Staff has worked with county councilor to come up with dates. The date of the proposed viewing would be Thursday, October 3rd. I believe all three commissioners are available that day, I checked with them previously. There would be various publication requirements that would be triggered by that. But if the commission is agreeable, I would recommend that you appoint Commissioners Hayes, Sparks, and Vidrickson to view the proposed road and set October 3rd as the date for viewing. Of course, alternatives would be to appoint other individuals as viewers, or choose a different date for the viewing. There was one other thing I was going to say, and then I lost it. So any questions?
Is three a magic number?
That's the number in statute.
That brings me to a question from a, from a Open Meetings Act viewpoint.
It will be noticed, it will be noticed a little bit oddly, it won't be a regular commission meeting, but we'll probably notice it as a special commission meeting for road viewing purposes. We'll have to figure that out in East Scribe.
I mean, my point is, would that then be an open, open meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Where public, anybody from the public can come and march down this avenue with us?
Correct.
There you go.
Any other questions?
And reconsider this deal.
Well, the, well, the issue of, I don't know, maybe Justin can help, is it an easement that is there now, or is it a right-of-way that's there now? You got me all confused. But will that be addressed at this same time by this viewing committee?
So my understanding is that it's an easement, and it was never really used as a public right-of-way in the way that most county road easements are.
Correct, yeah. What was, what was the, Harry, I'll let you.
So, yeah, it was opened as a private road, or private easement, when it was opened back in 1873, or whatever it was.
So the real issue?
Yeah, and it's only 20 feet.
I'm not going to get into it now.
It's only 20 feet wide is the real issue through there. And the more, yeah, minimum was 40 then, and it's 40 now.
Any other questions? Okay, any comment from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2024-125 as presented.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-125 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Okay, moves us on to the next one.
Amended meeting schedule for 2024 with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
This one is hopefully fairly simple. We have a scheduled study session on September 17th and a scheduled regular meeting on September 24th. Due to a conflict with one of the commissioners, it's recommended that we flip-flop those dates and have the regular meeting on the 17th and the study session on the 24th. The attached amendment to the resolution would accomplish that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move we approve RFA 2024-126 as presented.
Second motion.
Got an approval and a second for approve RFA 2024-126. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners' comments?
I just got a, you know, we attended the, the viewing the other night of the proposed facility.
Master plan.
Master plan. I do want to thank the public for coming out. I mean, I think we had a pretty good group of people come in, had a lot of comments, thanked the staff for what they did to put it together, and it was pretty informational. There was a lot of stuff there to look at. And I know there was a lot of sticker shock there, but, you know, at least it's, it's one thing for us to be able to take a look at and say, hey, you know, it may not be something we're going to do, but I mean, we got a plan. I mean, it's, you know, what we had, so I do want to, you know, thank the staff and public for showing up at that event.
And to tag on to that comment, Mr. Chair, there will be an online opportunity for folks to weigh in as well, for folks who were not able to make it out to the public open house last Thursday night.
Good.
All right, I'll comment on that. I, I was a little surprised at the scope of, of that master planning, but I do think it's important as county, as, as we move forward, as we look at facilities and do things, we need to be good neighbors to the city and make sure that we're not impacting something that they want to do down the road. So I can see the need for us to work together, but we do have certain needs that we do need to address here in the near future.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so that passes 5-0.